Yep, we're good. We can start.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02. This school committee may seek to convene open session and recess to executive session for discussion and/or action regarding those items of business exempt from open meeting under Rhode Island General Law 4246-4 and A. Discussion Action, Pending Litigation, Potential Settlement Terms, Barilla versus South Kingstown School Department, PC 2022-00700, Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2, and B. Discussion Action, Terms of Contract Negotiation, Interim Director of Facilities, Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A1, and C. Discussion Action, Terms of Contract Negotiation,
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Digital Literacy, Communications and Transportation Specialists, Okay. 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 Rhode Island General Law 4246-581. Okay. 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 Individuals have been notified, including their right to have any discussion held in open session. Individuals have been notified, including their right to have any discussion held in open session.
I'd like to make a motion to recess to executive session. I'd like to make a motion to recess to executive session.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. That motion passes.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. It's 7:05.
Present.
Brad Shear.
Here.
Kate Massanati. Kate Massanati.
Here.
Paula Whitford. Michelle Broussot.
Yeah.
James Frastiva.
Here.
And I, Carol Vedder, am here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
We'll make a motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes, so that motion passes to seal the minutes. There were no votes taken in executive session. Next up is comments from the community.
Brittany Apuzo.
Good evening, members of the school committee, Mr. Padraza and Mr. Seeger. My name is Brittany Apuzo. I am a homeschool parent. I have been following the homeschool policy update from this committee for the last couple of months. The process has been very educational for me. My short comment tonight is just to give thanks. Thank you for your time, deliberation, and being receptive to our concerns. Your thoughtful decisions to return the policy for repeated review to the policy subcommittee was much appreciated. Myself and my fellow homeschool families are grateful that you paused, took a closer look, and gave space for further discussion. That kind of consideration reflects well on the committee and our town as a whole. It shows that you value transparency, community input, and thoughtful decision-making. Thank you for your service and for being responsive to the voices of families like mine. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Corey Newkirk.
Hi, I'm Corey Newkirk. I'm also a homeschool parent in South Kingstown. And I just wanted to thank the committee for listening to the concerns of South Kingstown homeschool families and for reading all of our emails and really taking the time to try to fully understand the impacts that various policy changes would have on the homeschooling community. These issues are things that impact our daily lives, and we appreciate the time and effort that you have put forth examining the various aspects of the proposed policy changes and your willingness to find solutions that are logical, fair, and protect the lives and lifestyles of South Kingstown's homeschooling children and family. We appreciate all of your consideration and your willingness to work together to find suitable solutions and your dedication to continue to strive for the best outcome for all of the South Kingstown residents that you represent. Again, I thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come to the podium with that public comment? Next up is the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move items A and B from the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Oh, thank you, Michelle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have been removed. Have been removed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
And I'd like to make another motion to table items A and B from the consent agenda to a future meeting.
Again.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes. That will bring us to item number five, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the public. In my report this evening, we will have updates on personnel. I'll then discuss enrollment, both current and the potential impacts that we are looking at for FY26. And then I would like to go through some of the recent highlights in that the district has been experiencing recently. So, next slide, please. It is here that we have our traditional personnel report. However, I would like to defer or some of my comments over to Mr. Kilpatrick, who will speak on behalf of his name on this personnel report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pedraza. Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the committee. It is true, it is with a measure of sadness that I will be departing the district. I've taken a new position with the Van Buren Charitable Foundation in Newport. And I just want to say a few things. One, mainly, this is not a reflection of anyone currently in the district or any, anything happening in the district, nothing like that. It's simply a great opportunity that I want to avail myself of. I think it's best for my family and myself at this time. It is a little unfortunate because I've been treated so well here for my brief tenure. And I especially want to thank Superintendent Pedraza for his leadership and his friendship, for sure. Really have appreciated working for someone like him and Mr. Seeger as well. Just an absolute delight. A great leadership team, wonderful people, and the seven of you as well. I really want to thank all of you for your trust in me. You really have given me a boost of confidence. You've you've just been great to work with, and I appreciate you all very, very much. And that it goes without saying for everybody else in the district. Ms. Terry has been wonderful. Mr. Doug Snow has been great as well. You know, I could name lots of people. Just super grateful to, to be able to work here for the experience that I've had, and I'm certainly going to miss everyone. And I still live down the road, so I might pop in here and there. Just to, just to torture the superintendent now. My last day is June 6th. I have a lot of work to do until then. I'm dedicated until then, for sure. And obviously afterwards, happy to help. You know, again, I'm not, not too far away. So, thank you all very, very much. I'm sure I'll have another opportunity, hopefully, to, to say a few more things, but that's, that's it in brief. So, thank you so much.
Ryan, it goes without saying, we're going to miss you. You've been so wonderful to work with. You're going to be hard to replace, and I'm just going to invite anybody else who wants to say a word of thanks to Ryan.
Yeah, I echo those comments. I really enjoyed your presentations. I think you made the, the financial aspect of our budget very accessible and consumable, easy to understand, and I think it is going to be hard to replace that and hard to find someone to fill those shoes. And I really thank you for the time you brought to our district, and I know it's brief. And I know your next venture is going to be wonderful, and they're going to love you. So I thought you did a really great job. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
I agree with what Mr. Stevo said, that you've made things. Of course, I'm a spreadsheet geek anyway, but you have made things easy to understand, and you've always been open for questions. And we're all going to miss you, but you know, our loss is someone else's gain. I'm sorry, just really sorry to see you go, but I wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service here, and I don't know, we will miss you, but I do understand family. I love mine, and you have a baby, and I don't think it could get any better.
Thank you, Ms. Paul.
So you came to us during a time where we were in a little bit of crisis. And you brought a measured tone to the conversation. And you brought a level of ethics, integrity, and you, you just, you, you brought a value back to our community and a trust with our community, which was very difficult. And we watched it from last year even to this year, working with the town council. There was a different tone. It goes to speak to the entire admin team, but, but it started when you joined us. And the folks who brought you in for us, and, and I've shared with you, I love when people have an opportunity to embrace something that they truly want to, to go out and embrace. So I'm truly happy for you and your family that you're able to pursue something that is a, is a good growth opportunity for you. So selfishly, you will be missed. And, and, but you came to us during a really pivotal time, and I think you brought, it was like a tipping point to seeing, oh, my gosh, there's hope here. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was very kind.
I agree with what everyone said, and I'll just say, I think, you know, the best thing you can do is leave a place better than you found it. And I say, I think you've done that in a dramatic way and left that whoever is going to follow you is going to have a much easier road, especially at the beginning compared to what you walked into. So, I appreciate that. And we congratulate you on your new position, because I'm familiar with them too, and they do fantastic work, and I think you're really going to enjoy being there. So, good for you for, for going to a place that's doing really great things.
Thank you, Brett.
So in the short time that I've come to watch you engage with our community as well as us with the town council. Your professionalism, your, the way you handled yourself, the way you handled all of the non-accolades that you were receiving during those times was very appreciative, and I wish you all the best for you and your family going forward.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you all.
I just want to pass on that I heard from multiple town councillors. They were sad that you were leaving as well. They enjoyed working with you. If you went, you are a big part of how we were able to work collaboratively together these last budget sessions. You've done such tremendous work. I thank you so much.
Likewise. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If there are no further questions or comments, personnel, ask for the next slide, please. So in this month's enrollment report, I'm first going to start with, with some what generally would be seen as, as good news, and talk a little bit about some of the incoming registrations. But I want to put that into context, both in our current context, as well as what it has the potential to mean if things stay the same, and some difficult decisions that we will have in front of us. So currently, so under the contractual cap with students who have either changed schools because they have moved during the course of the school year, and as such are, are in a new homeschool district, or folks who are new to the community and have just bought homes and will be joining us as new students at Peastale, our current grade three and grade four, which is next year's grade four and grade five. Based on these new enrollments and changes, those sections are currently at contractual cap. I bring this forward because especially for the grade four, that that was put forward in FY26 as a section for consolidation. At West Kingston, as you know, we've had some some times when it's been at cap during the course of this school year, both in grades K and grade one, which next year will be grades one and two. We had anticipated that that grade one becoming a grade two would be able to be maintained as two sections. We currently are transporting to other schools because of that closed contractual cap, three students to other schools. So we are already incurring this fiscal year. We have also, at this time, received new registrations that put both that grade one and grade two at contractual caps. So unfortunately, of those, of those positions that we put forward for potential reduction towards the over $800,000 that we were looking for towards FY26, essentially, what should be good news is that we have enrollment numbers that justify those sections to not be closed. Unfortunately, though, in doing so, if financial conditions were to not change, that obviously our delta of you know, $800,000 plus worth of cuts to reinstitute two positions would reduce that number and further put us into needing to go into other areas of funding other areas of operation with fund balance, so that if we needed to open up those other sections. We still do not know the impact of whether we could have those students or other students go to other schools in the district. But in doing so, we incur both long-term costs. We also have, especially at K and one, we have people in many cases who are entering a new homeschool district, and then for the next foreseeable future are either going to need to be made or may not get transitioned back, or there may need to be a need to continue transportation. At what point, we need to get to a delta by which we are investing in transportation when we would rather invest in individuals and making class sizes equitable across all schools in the district. Again, lots of things can change. It is now, you know, it is house hunting season as much as people come. We have in-migration. We also have out-migration. So those numbers could change. However, I did want to bring it to this committee's attention, so that it didn't come as a surprise. So, next slide, please.
Hold on, I just want to pause there. If you pick a few questions, because I think we all have a question. I just want to clarify. So, our exposure is that at Peastale, we thought we could have one reduction, but we can't.
We, we, we can. It will just, we now, where we were going to before is because we were under the contractual cap. Generally, the grade level, we do not see as much in-migration, and so we were. However, what's happened is that we have had in-migration that the conditions that we, that would normally be true, where we could absorb one, two, three, we are already at that level before summer registrations have, have come.
Okay, so that's an exposure at, at Peastale versus what's in the budget. And then you're saying there's a possibility that we might have to add two new positions at West Kingston, given the size of the school, the, those classes, and we're already transporting students to another school. And I think you're right, long-term. Where does that break even, that of transportation costs versus just another classroom in, in West Kingston? So I understand the analysis. I just want to make sure I understand. It's two positions, new positions at West Kingston.
One of which was, was set to be reduced. So it'd be, there was a reduction from this year's sections. So if, if I may, it's up on there. So if you notice, in terms of this year's, and I'm making, I want to make sure I've, I've done this correctly. Yep. So if you notice that in the current grade two at West Kingston, so the bottom grade two go across where we have three sections, and currently have two in grade two, that we were, we were going to be able to essentially in grade three, move from three sections to two, and that we would be able to maintain that. That is, that is not the, currently the case. As, as we now have continued registrations for West Kingston coming in.
So our needs right now versus what we budgeted is a, a change of four positions?
No, it is currently, ultimately, we, I know that we can absorb some of those, and again, we haven't had any out-migration. It's just that as of right now, with people registering, what looks like sections that may or may not be, or either none of those right now are at contractual caps. So we are okay right now. There's still room. However, we need to start looking at how many people are coming in, and based on the new registrations, if we were to say that none of those, we have no out-migration, all of those existing sections that are highlighted in yellow are now at contractual caps. So we can, we could absorb those students. We just couldn't absorb them at their homeschool.
I just want to make sure I understand what you just said, because
I, I don't, I don't understand that.
Right. So, my apologies.
I asked a question because I think I'm getting lost in the translation here.
So essentially, that grade three, so starting at Peastale, that grade three, when it rolls to grade four, if that were to be consolidated even right now with 75, that's closed. We could not have any new people coming in for fourth grade to Peastale. If, same thing would be true if, if grade four, our current grade four, of which we currently have 48, if we consolidated that from three sections to two, we would be under the contractual cap by two. However, based on current enrollments, new registrations for Peastale, it's right now, if we were to start this, start next school year now, we'd be at 50, and we would not be able to open up or enroll any new students at Peastale. Could we move them to other schools? Yes. If we take a look at West Kingston, grade, grade four, we have space. That, again, that grade four becoming grade five next year. So essentially, what I'm trying to communicate is that, not that we can't absorb those students, but we would need to do so by sending new families to the district away from their homeschool. Our only recourse to that would be opening up new sections. In which case, if we were to open up new sections, we would be doing so from money that was budgeted to be cut from FY26, we would now incur those costs. However, that is something that especially given the duration, depending on where we would put those folks would need to be considered because of the duration of that families would stay with us. So, you know, not to say that, again.
I just want to know, within the budget, did we, at Peastale, did we have that we were going to contract both of those classrooms?
We were consolidating one at Matunik, one at Peastale, one at West Kingston.
I'm just trying to see the impact versus budget.
Yep.
So, so there's an impact of one person because we thought we could contract it at Peastale, and we can't. And then at West Kingston, we could possibly need two new positions? And at Matunik, we can still consolidate one of those?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I was just trying to put it to get to what we had in the budget and what is our reality now?
So of those that I'm bringing up in terms of Peastale and West Kingston, we've consolidated one at each school. So there are two positions up for consolidation. And we may still be able to absorb those, but we would be, have to do so by sending them to other school districts, should there be no out-migration or movement within the community.
Okay, thank you. I, I think I got it.
I have two thoughts simultaneously going through my head. One is, I'm wondering if we need to really reconsider another redistrict. We have, we went ten years without redistricting. And then when we were closing schools, we did a redistrict, what was that, four years ago? We may now be looking at a scenario where we need to, and I wouldn't, clearly, we wouldn't be able to redistrict between now and September. But this is going to, if if this trend continues, this is going to keep happening. And the last thing we want to do is as people are coming to us. Telling them they can't go to their homeschool. So we want to make sure, and I'm watching a commu- a neighborhood be built right on South Road, right down the road from me, another thirty houses are going in. And I know people, you know, are saying it's hard to, it's hard to move into our community. People are moving into our community in droves. They're, they may be moving in from other states, it may not be local people buying the houses, but people are moving in. And if they, and we want to make sure that we're welcoming them to their homeschools if they move into a particular area. Um so that is, needs to be put on the table, I think, as something to explore going forward. But in the immediate term, I go back to, we need to go back to the town council. We can't keep taking, we're, we're attracting students right now. The last thing we want to do is repel them. So we we need to be able to go back to the town council, they've told us to do it before. This is item number two, quite frankly, as far as I'm concerned, coming out of the equity audit. And now coming into this, that I think we need to take them up on it and say, you've told us to come back if this is a problem, it's clearly a problem. And we need to, again, go back and fight for our students and our families to be placed where they need to be.
And it's, it wouldn't, it's not premature, because they are planning to. Build houses. And so we have to be a one step ahead of the game, so that. Families can go to their district school, their homeschool, right? So, but yeah.
I'll just, yeah, I was gonna say almost exactly what Kate said. Um so I agree, uh. Just to add that there are some pretty significant for this town, large developments that have started. Go working through the permanent process. Um probably furthest along in terms of the big ones is um the Commons. They want to add two more buildings up by the train station, a large development, extremely large for this town. And so I think we need to be thinking about that in our, and that's what leads us to needing to redistrict, cuz I think. When you think about those units being added, not everybody's gonna have kids, some of them are. And I think we have the capacity for them, but not everything's in the right place right now for us to be able to do it the right way. And we need to redistrict with that in mind, thinking about how many, how many kids are gonna be moving into those new developments and. That's just a process that could take more than a year, but the time to start is soon.
With all that said, you know, and 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 knowing that, we are getting ready to turn Wakefield School back over to the town. For them to develop. Are we sure we can do that? I mean.
Well, that's, that's part of the process of, I mean. Of looking at at the enrollments numbers going forward with what they're building, and we don't have that information because. I know what, I know what's going on at the Commons is studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms apartments. I don't know what the other permits have been pulled for, but you're right, we we do need a lot more information. So, but again, this is a long-term process. I mean, this is a process, the last time I did it, it took. When we started in Oc- the very beginning of October and we ended in May. So it it is a process that takes a while. But I think you're, I think you're all right. We, this is something that we definitely. To bring to the table and start talking about now.
Yeah, I would definitely agree, cuz I do remember the conversation with the town council. That they did say there is a process by which we could come back and make requests for additional. Funding depending on the the circumstances. I think it also goes hand in hand in terms of their desire to work collaboratively with us. Uh given one of their strategic initiatives for affordable housing. And so if you take that and put that in with everything that we're seeing now, there's certainly. Uh cause for uh conversation.
I think it's important to prioritize putting the students in the home district, cuz I know. You know, from families, especially if they're out of town, out of out of state, they wanna look at what the school district, what what elementary school specifically, they're districted for. So I can imagine being fairly off-putting, they show up, they register, and then all of a sudden they're like, oh, you don't get Matunik, you don't get West Kingston, you get. You know, cuz we're full there, or you know, it it. It's not welcoming, and I want to be welcoming to new families coming in. I think we do need to go back to the town council. I totally agree with you, Kate, I think it is. Something we need to really seriously consider, and I, and Paul, I appreciate your out of the box thinking about potentially keeping Wakefield online too. I don't know if we're quite at that point, I think the trends keep us in that direction of not opening another elementary, but. Uh we we have to consider all options, and so, you know, I I think it's, it's something we need to consider.
So. You know, uh as I'm happy to do that, I'm bringing this forward because this is the the latest data and, you know, we. This is also for those who are watching or uh who may write articles on it or who may speak to their neighbors. In terms of my superintendent's update or my appeal to existing families. You know, who know that they are staying or that they are going or that the house is on the market or that they are. Um they're choosing a different school. It, this is a real example of where it would have real implications. That if they say, well, we're not sure yet and we're trying to hold a spot. So here we see it in very real terms of if people have made a decision and not communicated that to us. Or the benefits to the larger community and in South Kingston of the the taxpayers in general of the. The collective good, if you will, that we need to know that decision, and if people have made that, to please let their schools know. Um but it's also, you know, a good, again, good problems to have in that people, um I'm pleased to report that. That two thousand two hundred and thirteen is the exact same number that I presented to you. Based on the October second enrollment. So while we've had some fluctuations. On some months and some in migration and out migration, um ultimately, from. You know, my October presentation, uh early in October to today, our enrollment is held steady. Uh across the district, and so that is, that's, that's a great trend, and that's something that we wanna wanna continue, and I see as. You know, wanting to make sure that we provide those resources, but at the same time, I do wanna make an appeal to the commit. To the community to make, to give us that information, cuz I, when we do go, I don't want to be wrong. I don't wanna be, cuz when I ask for it, it's because we need it and I've got the data. And I don't want that data to turn around and then go, oopsie, didn't, you know, didn't didn't do this, and then, you know, we we cried wolf. So uh I would ask for a little bit more time, but I can begin.
I think it's a good problem to have.
Absolutely.
Talking about a lot of students. Um I just wanna make a couple of things, one thing clear. Um we're looking at enrollments by grade that are full, but we still have capacity in our classrooms.
Correct.
We've got like five rooms at Peastale not being used and and three at Matunik and 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 a couple at West Kingston. So we have room to open new sections in the building. That's not, that's, it's not a building usage.
Absolutely.
It's the way we've redistricted that that the growth is in West Kingston and none in Matunik, right? So we need to balance that redistrict again. Um I do wanna say, though, that. I think for long term, for the students at West Kingston, we've had many, many parents come to us. And say that the classes are too large, it's not equitable because other um schools have lower class size. I am also for going to the, back to the town council saying. Our numbers are larger than we projected for next year and doing the ask because. It it, in my opinion, it's the right thing to do for these students and families. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Guys, that's a time, sort of a timing question, so when? In order, uh we might just be retaining teachers we have already, but what's the timing for us to recruit and retain? If we say we're adding, we're gonna have two more sections, then we, or we would, we'd be recalling.
We'd be recalling, we have displacements.
Right, so we would, what's our timing like in order to make that kind of dis- that decision?
Well, if if someone is, if someone is, has, their position has been reduced once we reopen. It then we, they get recalled by seniority, so if they, you know, if they had not taken another position elsewhere in the district. For those who were displaced, um based on seniority, they would already be employed, the person who may have been impacted by that. Um the person with the highest seniority who holds that certification would be be given the offer of recall. First, and then should they decline, uh then we would move on to the next person. Um the only, yeah, so, um the only other aspect in terms of. Um registrations uh that I'm pleased to report is that at both uh Matunik and West Kingston. Uh in terms of kindergarten enrollments, we have started getting into the um both sections. So in terms of the number of registrations, we're not, you know, like, oh, wait a minute, hey, let's make a push, we're we're holding an additional. We're already into, you know, contractual caps where we're gonna be able to balance class sizes, so that we've, that we've gone into. Uh traditionally, registrations at Peastale have come in a little bit later, so um we haven't hit that third section yet, but. Uh looking at the historical trend, we do normally hit that over the course of this, over the course of the summer. And again, um. Lower class sizes distributed is 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 not a bad thing, given kindergarten. Given their first year in school, if they weren't with us in uh in preschool.
Mister Bajaza, um a couple of questions. Um. What do you envision as like a, a drop dead date? To say, okay, by this date, we need to look at the enrollment and decide if we are okay. With the planned number of sections. As per the budget, or we need to increase, what do, what do you, I know that. That um putting a teacher into that classroom would would work off the recall list, but do you have like? An idea in mind of when?
Uh unfortunately, re- right now, I I don't, we do have some contractual dates. That also come into play, that if all of a sudden by a certain date, we uh can go over a cap or. Um the other pieces regarding transportation. Um we also, again, have uh different, we have lots of um end of year decisions being made. Um some involving special education, some involving, again, movement, so as of right now, I I don't have a a drop dead. Date because they're just, um, you know, we could have two. Through, there's just too much unpredictability that happens during the course of the summer. And that when it happens is also an important factor because of those contractual dates as well as. Wh- where it happens. Um. So, you know, in terms of, we we keep working on enrollment and balancing out depending on the the situation that we're in. All the way through the start of, through the start of school. Uh it just. Again, if there's a large migration that then, if we start to tip the scales that say, okay, is it one or two students? Versus are we talking about now six, seven, eight? Okay, now it may, you know, then we're at the tipping point of, you know, opening up a new section because if we're. You know, moving students all across and, you know, needing to do so via a a full-size school bus at the cost of five hundred dollars a day. The the investment there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not. In favor of busing students to their non-home school. Um unless it's absolutely necessary, but I agree with my colleagues here at the table that we should. Um, you know, watch how this happens and explain it to the town council. But I wonder what other people here at the table think about. We're looking at this on May thirteenth. And we can already see the problem areas as you um pointed them out to us, Mister Bajaza. I I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to say to. The council president, the town manager, look at what we're looking at at Peastale and at West Kingston. Um and the fact that we're getting more kids coming into the district, um. That means the dream I had last night, which was literally that we had more kids than we had space for. Like, I can't believe, looking at these numbers, um. I'm like so excited about more kids, um but. I would, I mean, what do people think about, you know, kinda giving them a heads up? You told us to come back to you for more money if we needed it. We're giving you a fair warning about, look at. What we're facing with um nu- numbers at these two schools.
I agree, and that this is, this is the first step in that, in that process. Once it becomes, um, once I have concrete. Families with addresses, with occupancy that are coming and registering with us, um. Once we, that becomes a reality, I wanna put it on people's radar, put it open for discussion. As well as acknowledge that other factors and other things will change, but um if it's happening this early. Again, this is also my first dance at this time of year, so while I lived it from July one on, trying to deal with the repercussions. And make sure everybody had the best seat or a seat, as well as the best seat that they were entitled to and deserved, um. You know, I I can't speak to how early this, you know, what happened this year raised its head in previous years. Um so I can, I'm just bringing it to your attention now, because again, these are real, not hypothetical, not Nezdek numbers. These are real families with appointments um at the registrar's office for these grades.
I, I just, anecdotally, it seems to me that it's early. Um the other thing, um. I mean, I know dri- when I drive around town, I I see these groups of new homes, but. Um. Do, and I suppose if I stopped and thought about it, I could figure this out myself, but do do we have? A way of finding out, well, you know, in the West Kingston area, there are. Ten new homes going up and they're three and four bedroom homes. Which indicates to us, it's probably not the old people like me.
There, so generally, there are projections, Nezdek does take that into account when they take, when they do our projections in terms of. Um the building permits issued by the town is factored into that, um. And then, you know, but making sure, taking a look and cross-referencing that with the planning department is not something that. That I've done, but generally is something that when we, when you go to redistrict or if all of a sudden you have large properties that are. Um set to go up, um that there will be, that there will be studies done of which. Um or they have calculations by which, depending on the number of bedrooms and uh per unit or per per. Development, um how many, and is it cost restricted or age restricted, et cetera, that they run. Um and that, in my experience, uh in the former life, uh have been fairly, uh surprisingly, spot, pretty spot on. Um but I have not yet done that cross-reference of Nezdek or done, gone to the planning department um at this time.
Just a final thought is, when Nezdek was project, making those, the most recent projections, they did not have on their radar. That we were building a new high school, and I think that plays a a big impact, um whether that means we'll get. Hundreds of new families or we get twenty new families, whatever that means, it doesn't, it kinda doesn't really matter, what matters is what we're seeing happen. Um historically, sitting at this table, um the past five to seven years. Our numbers never flattened, they were always going down. I know at the high school level, they've kinda flattened, these are creeping up. Typically, we don't, we have not seen that in the past five to seven years. Now, again, to your point. We don't know if people are are leaving, they're not gonna tell us until September, so we do need to make sure. So we do need to make sure we have data in fact, so I appreciate you doing your due diligence.
And I would back Kate up on that. For thirteen years, the the numbers have never leveled out and we're seeing this, but for thirteen years that we've seen them going down.
And so, uh, maybe that's because of, uh, next slide. Uh, we've got some, we've got some great things going on and uh, we have some great, and I'll highlight here because it's regarding uh, teacher of the year. Uh, we've got some, some great teachers. Uh, great faculty and staff, but I'll highlight teachers here, uh, just like the committee and the community know because we did open up nominations to the uh, the entire district um, community that I received a whole, a total of a hundred and twenty-one total nominations. Um, they came from students, parents, colleagues, administrators. Um, I had nominations across all five schools and we had forty-five educators um, who have been put forward uh, because of the way that they impacted uh, our students' lives for the, for, for the positive, and that's an outstanding number. And I know it's a, it's a low number because I'm sure others felt they weren't deserving or didn't want to embarrass a colleague or that, uh, as well as people who may have won in the past who stepped back. So to have forty-five educators nominated by our school community, um, I think is is a wonderful recognition of itself, and it's something that I'd like to to share, um, so that people are aware um, of the um, the, in the process, principals need to verify. So in terms of somebody being in good standing, not being on on a, you know, uh, an improvement plan, the those things, we, none of the forty-five. Um, so we have forty-five and we also uh, talk to teachers to make sure it's something that they want to go forward with. Uh, and that they're comfortable with because this also, that the district teacher of the year also goes forward to ride and has the uh, opportunity to be included in the Rhode Island State Teacher of the Year. Um, also, Ride likes to use our any, every district's teacher of the year as a uh, thought partner is the kindest way that I can put that, um, or uh, free labor is another, is another way I could put it, uh. Uh, and so to make sure that they're comfortable with that commitment as well. So the teacher does need to accept, and then once they do, they put forward a resume. Uh, they're given a choice of some prompts in terms of making a professional statement or a scenario. And then, uh, currently in the district, they are the, they are then ranked by uh, by the panel of former uh, district teachers of the year and then brought forward. So uh, that process is currently underway. Uh, next slide, please. Um, I know we do recognitions um, for for students, um, but I keeping with the theme of we've just went through teacher appreciation week and we're talking about district teacher of the year. Uh, I wanted to make sure that I highlighted some, some uh, accolades that have recently come about or that uh, come across my desk. Um, I'd like to congratulate South Kingston High School where we sit. Uh, they are a first-time uh, distinguished high school as designated by Project Lead the Way. So that's associated with many of our CTE courses and the hands-on programming. Um, and that designation of being a distinguished high school is uh, given to schools that increase student access engagement to their Project Lead the Way programming. Um, that students who are engaged in Project Lead the Way programming, um, also um, tie into in many cases, receiving that uh, commissioner's seal or in many cases having that CTE endorsement. That is a uh, most of our project lead the ways do so. And so again, getting uh, higher percentages of our graduates who not only get that diploma, but also that seal, um, i- is something that uh, everyone here in South Kingston High School should be lauded for. Um, I'd like to highlight Mr. Brandon Pierce, uh, who on Friday, uh, was uh, awarded the Rhode Island Secretary of the States uh, twenty twenty-five Civic Education Teacher of the Year. Uh, I know as my colleague, Mr. Seager and I, as our, as reformed or recovering social studies teachers, um, little, you know, a little envious here. I didn't, I didn't win it, but you man, but um, so, but I'd like to highlight for the community that again, in the, this is a state winner, um, for the Civic Education Teacher of the Year, honors an outstanding teacher who have demonstrated commitment and expertise in teaching civics or American government. And then this is my favorite part with special consideration given to teachers who employ innovative teaching practices and experiential learning. So again, one, once again tied in with that project, Lead the Way, that experiential learning. Um, again, another accolade that uh, deserves community recognition and I'm sure will. Next slide, please.
If I may, I I did attend that uh, presentation at the State House for Mr. Pierce and the amount of love they got from the students was was unbelievable. Uh, he was just obviously a very effective, very uh, very good teacher for teaching civics, got them involved, got them in AP Gov, AP um, uh, history and I I I have the picture I can show you, but they made a flag of him with his face on it. It was incredible. It's such a nice honor uh, to be there to see him accept his award and he was very thankful for it, so that was a great experience.
So I will be bringing all of the, all of the educators forward for educator recognitions later on, but again, I wanted to make sure that the community as they're potentially making decisions, uh, here the latest and greatest. Um, and one of the, another one also here at South Kingston High School is Ms. Kate Burbriq. Um, she is a Rhode Island finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science and Teaching. So this is a nation, a national award, um, of which she is a Rhode Island finalist. Um, and recipients of the Presidential Award represent the best of STEM education, demonstrating deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable student success. So best of luck to to Kate as she moves forward in the process. Next slide. And of course, what we highlighted, some of the educators here, but we also continue to do it, uh, you know, do it for the, the students and outside of some of the recognitions, uh, just because I didn't want people to lose sight of if it gets kicked off of news agencies. But uh, recently, South Kingston has been highlighted in certain news agencies. We've been uh, both the pharmacy tech career uh, pathway or not pathway, but program here at the high school was on Channel Ten recently, as well as uh, one of our senior baseball players in in terms of uh, his recovery and his sportsmanship being highlighted as he's gone from a pitcher who's recovering from Tommy John surgery, I believe. He was now a designated hitter, but doing whatever it is for the, for the sake of the team. So uh, as well as we continue to rack up awards on the Providence Projo Student of the Week. Um, I think others districts may have given up because uh, we are just dominating. They don't even submit them anymore. Um, so I, I, we, so. But then again, I'm a tad biased, but again, um, wonderful things happening uh, in this school, in this district and and our educators and our students. And so, uh, my thanks and congratulations early to them, and that concludes my report.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Yes, Michelle.
I'd like to congratulate the rest of them too, but I would just like to comment. I saw both of those pieces on the news. And of course, I was on my paradise island and I made everybody in the, shh, 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 everybody in the house be quiet. And I actually, I think it was the pharmacy students. I said, I missed that and I made, I made them sit through me rewinding it, watching it again. I was so proud.
There's a lot to be proud of. And again, whether it be our students, our educators, the community partnerships, the programs, um, that, that the great things are being recognized, not only by those who are, who are here and who are doing it, but those who are outside. And a wonderful achievement. My thanks to them as well.
I'd like to say, just to echo, congratulations to all of those, um, reward recipients and um, we have fantastic educators and wonderful students. And so it's, it's um, such a proud moment for all of us and and um, so thanks to everybody. Um, so I will entertain a motion to accept the superintendent report.
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Wait, that will bring us to school committee business.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a, make a motion to move item I, uh, the homeschooling policy number seven, seven, ten, homeschooling, third read to the top of the school committee business agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. We will take that up first. I will let you go ahead, James.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that because I know we have some uh, members of the homeschool community with us. I wanted to make sure we get this done. I think we're all kind of ready to put this uh, policy to bed. Uh, just to uh, go over some of the highlights uh, from the last time this was brought up. There was a restructuring of the policy and how it's laid out, made a little more obvious, a little easier to read, I feel like, uh. But the, you know, we still have the Rhode Island Rever, uh, general law references. Uh, but we just clarified a few points and really the main clarifications we made were to the requirements that are being provided to us from Rhode Island Department of Education to report our students. Uh, and that was one of the, I think the main uh, problems with the current policy is that we don't have clear justification for uh, needing certain information from our homeschooling community to report those students properly to ride. And so I think this policy addresses that. Uh, it also addresses the ability for our, our administrators to fill in information that may otherwise be uh, not given or needed from the homeschooling community. That way, we can create a record in our system. It's really came down to being a software problem more than anything else. So we need to properly create that record in our system to report it out properly. And so this uh, addresses that uh, that concern. Um, largely, everything else is similar to what you've seen before, maybe worded uh, more clear, you know, a little more clarity. Uh, but similar, you know, there, there are state law around homeschooling. There are certain academic requirements that need to be met. There are certain things that need to be done and that's all accounted for in here. So I think um, you know, I appreciate the committee allowing us to go back and take another look at this, take another stab at it and really develop a policy that is so, you know, important, you know, makes sense and is is logical and sensible. Uh, so I appreciate uh, the ability to do that. So we're bringing it back to you for a third read and hopefully approval uh, this evening.
Any questions for James? Do we have a motion to accept the policy?
Take a motion to accept the policy for homeschooling.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And um, well, that will go back to our regularly scheduled agenda.
And I just want to say thank you to the homeschooling community for, you know, being such a great part of the process and advocating for um, what the families' needs were. I mean, it's a great process to work with the community directly. So I just want to say thank you, thank you. So that will bring us to item A, Discussion Action Field Trip, South Kingston High School, Brownstone Park, Portland, Connecticut.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip to Brownstone Park for the
Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Oh.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Item B, Discussion Action Field Trip, West Kingston Elementary School to Mystic Aquarium in Mystic, Connecticut.
I'll make a motion to approve item B, Field Trip for West Kingston Elementary School to Mystic Aquarium in Mystic, Connecticut.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. That will bring us to item C, Discussion Action Potential Contract for the Interim Director of Facilities. I'll turn that over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it is, it is my pleasure uh, at this time, although he is not here. Uh, I'm proud to announce that we are pleased to welcome Mr. John Gould as our interim maintenance director. Uh, he has an easily call impressive, uh, thirty-seven-year tenure with the district. He's had twenty-two at West Kingston. Uh, Mr. Gould obviously brings uh, extensive experience and a deep institutional and community knowledge to this role. Uh, he's worked in different, he had previously worked in in maintenance as well as various schools, um, school and again, as I, as I alluded to, um, currently at at West Kingston. So he's got the, the deep understanding of all of the schools and what it takes to to run the facilities as well as maintenance and custodians. Uh, so we are excited to uh, bring him on as as an interim and he, I know he's excited to get started in this role. Uh, and I'm confident that he's going to be able to hit the ground running uh, as early as tomorrow. So uh, my thanks to Mr. Gold, Gould for uh, being involved in this uh, process and uh, agreeing to come on as our interim maintenance director. And thank you to the committee uh, for the uh, for the uh, contract discussion.
Do we have a motion to accept the contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the potential contract for interim director of facilities as presented by the superintendent.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next up, we have the uh, Discussion Action Equity Audit Planning for the Public Forum. And again, um, ask the superintendent to start us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would, I'm bringing before this committee discussion, um, where, uh, in terms of guidance or school committee level involvement, um, in terms of wanting to be involved or direct uh, our community forums regarding the equity audit. Um, the, the thinking originally was that uh, we would have at the very least two forums. One, uh, although every uh, school committee meeting is a open forum and opened to public comment and we can have it as an agenda item. Um, ultimately to hear our uh, building level and district level administrators here directly from the community, the reactions to the audit as well as their hopes and aspirations and uh, for next steps is something we want to avail ourselves of. Um, our first uh, or the first idea was to have, uh, again, I have commitment from uh, building administrators, depending on the day and the time, uh, from every grade level to again, what we would be running would be uh, almost a, uh, an organized open forum for people to uh, express uh, their uh, again, their, their feedback, their thoughts about it. Um, it would not be initially a or it would not be a, well, here are our solutions or here are our plans. We still want to make sure we hear the community's reactions and that those next steps and then the reactions to those are more appropriate for the strategic plan uh, that is, that is being built forward, although we can speak to some of the the things that are being done or that are currently in place. Uh, we would be looking to have uh, again, hear the community's feedback. The thinking also was is that if we ran one potentially here in in it or at a school or at a school level, uh, and then we would, I would also be reaching out uh, for the other public forum to potentially happen uh, in conjunction or uh, or in collaboration potentially with the Johnny Cake Center who served as a um, a, a community outreach hub for the equity audit and so that those who uh, who, whose voices were heard through the Johnny Cake Center, that we would utilize them as a potential resource to make sure that those same constituents um, that we had a public forum to hear their feedback as well. Uh, and so, uh, before you tonight, I'm looking for any uh, level of guidance or involvement that the committee would like to have uh, in terms of planning those or uh, their involvement moving forward.
Do you have a timeframe in mind for the forum?
Um, well, as the uh, the traffic is noticeably different and I know that graduate, I I've, I've heard that things slow down once uh, once we get to this kind of stage and URI kind of closes down. So I would rather have it sooner rather than later as well as before um, summer jobs kick in and employment changes and schedules change. Um, so it is something that I would like to have um, within the next month.
I think I think that before we can do a uh, I guess in talking to people about the equity audit, um, mostly what I hear is, what does it say? Right? Because nobody's reading ninety pages of some, in some cases, pretty technical language and feedback. And so I think I would like to do it soon. I would like to do it soon too, for the reasons that you stated, you know, before the end of the school year. But I don't think we can do it until we have sort of a very simple executive summary that tell, that sort of summarizes what it says, because most of the people who are going to attend it aren't going to read ninety pages of the actual audit, and we're going to need to summarize it and allow them to see sort of the high-level feedback. So whatever I guess I would say schedule as soon as possible, once that has been done.
So that consultant wrote a summary. So are you talking about an additional summary?
I'm thinking, yeah, simple. Yeah.
My thoughts are, and we have this new thing called AI who can help us. Run it through.
Really? I don't.
Because I love AI.
I.
They can pull out, though, and kidding aside, AI or human eye. I think what needs to come out of it is what rises to the top of important action items that we either, either action items that we know definitively that we need to address or action topics that we need to address and grab like our top five. Clearly, we and I hated this analogy the first time it was said to me, but it's so accurate. Like, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time, right? So we're not going to eat the elephant this year. So what are our top actionable pieces that we can attack that have the biggest impact, the most powerful impact on our, our learning community? And then I think once we have those, is it a top two? Is it a top three? Is it a top five? Whatever it looks like. And, and then we can plan our forms around those, get feedback, and then be able to build action, literal actionable items off of it.
So I agree. That's why I wanted to have this conversation. Because I think that we may read it and say, this is the item I think is most important as representative of, you know, being the representative on the school committee. I want you guys to have what you feel is important, bring that forward too. That's very important. So I agree, we need to take the time. Maybe AI is a good choice, but to have a mechanism to bring forth what is important to this community specifically. I think the consultant did a really good job of tying the things back to our community very specifically. But again, I really want to make sure that what we feel and the administrators feel and the central administration feels, that is the most important that we because it's ninety pages, we have to focus on what is the most important. And, and then you have to prioritize those two. So that's why this discussion is really important. And then we can give those ideas to the superintendent with a directive. And maybe we need a couple of weeks to for us to think about that, to bring it forward. But I do believe that we do want to make sure that we get this done within the next four weeks, probably. So time is of the essence. But, but we can set a date while we still think about what's, how to prioritize.
I mean, there could be a clear directive, next school committee meeting, each person sitting at the table should come forward with their top one, two, or three pieces they feel the equity audit highlighted, and then we can go from there. But we definitely need due dates or some of us won't do it.
So first, thank you, Kate, for the homework. Much appreciated. I was wondering how the Strategic Planning Committee is kind of talking about the equity audit and where they're engaged and working together on that. Is that what's that?
First meeting will be Thursday.
That's a great question, though, because this Strategic Planning Committee is going to be using this to really build that plan. But, and so I'll let you go ahead and explain more.
So essentially, when our strategic, the equity audit will serve as the, as the needs assessment. So in, in terms of highlighting, so rather than having multiple community forums and getting input, this community has been doing that a long time, whether it be for the accreditation of this high school or continued accreditation, whether it's been for the superintendent's search, whether it was now for the equity audit in terms of the community's core values and what's important, as well as now analyzing and disaggregating the achievement data as well as disciplined data. That's been done for us. And so on the ride required on the ride required elements of the strategic plan, as well as tying into at least what in the past has been required under for federal government, for our federal grants as a needs assessment, the equity audit will will serve as that. However, we are not bound by the you know, it, it's up to us to determine the level of importance or in terms of what gets operational, operationalized first. And that ultimately will become the direction of the, of the steering committee for the strategic plan, and then ultimately for administration and teachers to work collaboratively to do that. Story that the equity audit tells behind those, that conclusion, what other what other realities, what are we not hearing? What are we, what is not reflective in the equity audit? And then making sure that as we put forward strategies to close those achievement gaps and make sure that all students are being treated both equally and equitably, and we close those achievement gaps. What would be the most efficient strategy, either culturally and broad-based or very specific and programmatically? So essentially, it fills the need and it calls out for us what our greatest needs and disparities are that we should look to, to take on as an educational institution, public educational institution.
I just want to talk a little bit about logistics for the forum. I think it's very appropriate that the superintendent superintendent and the assistant superintendent lead this discussion. There are the professional educators with other administrators or educators that you feel would be a great addition to this process, whatever is my feelings are, your best to guide and gather those educators. And also, I think to look now to when those people would be available to set a date, which might be good, even if we don't have exactly what we want on the agenda for that night or our priorities for that night. So I, I think I would like to give those directives to the superintendent if you all concur.
Yeah, I just also would suggest that you follow up on your idea to include the Johnny Cake Center as a partner in that, in that forum and include their attendance, Kate's attendance as being important there too.
Okay, so also to reach out to Kate Brewster, who I know you've spoken with before. That's a great.
So we will hold that as, so my understanding now is that with that directive, we will look to schedule those dates, and we will do so in such that should a member, it is not a school committee event or something that in terms of, while people might show up, it is not something that we're going to need a quorum for, but it will be run by the administration. Thank you.
No, that's great. Again, I think you're the best to present this from an educational standpoint. But I do think that us looking at the content and priorities is very important. So I'm going to, I'm going to assign Kate's homework. So send your, your thoughts, your ideas, how you prioritize things, whatever you want to bring forward. Send it to Terry. And then we can get it compilated. But we're, we're going to bring it back at our next meeting because we are on a tight schedule here. Are we good? Does anybody want to add anything?
I just want to make note that there is an executive summary on the audit that was provided to us. So you don't have to read all ninety pages. And having, having gone through them all, I just to give my own quick summary, there are twenty pages worth of reports at the end. So it's really seventy pages. I know that doesn't make it sound much better, but it does. It does tend to repeat some of the same content over and over. So once you kind of read through it in one section, sort of, you get the gist of it. You sort of get the sense of it. It is really good to dig down into those details of the audit, but there is there, there is an executive summary on the first couple of pages that really highlights what the gaps are, really highlights what the, you know, at least Westwind felt our priorities should be. But obviously, if we feel like our priorities are different, we can bring that up in our, our next meeting and you know, talk about it then.
Thanks. And just for the community, the entire equity audit is available on our website. So every, anybody who wants to go through and read all ninety pages or part of it, it's there. And again, there's a lot in there and a lot of great content that, that they and, and ideas and recommendations. So I'm glad we're finally getting the chance to bring this into our planning to do better with our education of our students. So anybody else has any other thoughts before we move on? Just want to give everybody a chance. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the school committee's Summer Professional Development Workshop. What used to mistakenly be called a retreat. So because we told Stuart he was going on a retreat and he thought he was going on vacation.
You may or not.
To make you work all day.
Yeah, it's a full-day workshop. So I wanted to put this on the agenda because we definitely need one for two reasons, probably more than two, but it is a chance for professional development for us as a committee. Also, we've got the opportunity to make changes to our bylaws at the retreat that specifically says in the bylaws. And there's things that we need to change for efficiency. One example is in the bylaws that say, it says we start our meetings at seven PM. Where we could say we could start as early as five, no later than seven. We could put some more flexibility efficiencies in some of the things in the bylaws. So, so we definitely need to have that, I'm not going to call it a retreat, that workshop. So I just want to have a discussion on when you would like to do that and, and also kind of the summer committee meetings that we feel are necessary. So with that, I'll let you give some input on which time during the summer that workshop would be best.
I would just suggest that our senior administrative team pick a few days that they can devote to an all-day retreat and have Ms. Moshasalt send out a doodle poll as far as the date is concerned. And you know, a decision will have to be made if we want legal to be there or not. So then they'd have to be wrapped in and then which members of the senior administrative team you want. So that kind of stuff, we can't work out. Mr. Pedraza or Mr. Seeger will need to work that out. So I mean, that's a, that's a starting place.
So that you're aware that, you know, one, if we can, or the whole, hopefully, if there's consensus around potential things that do not work or that should be avoided, you know, we want to make sure that folks are available and that we do, we will be putting out surveys in terms of desired professional development or areas that you'd like to, to work on in addition to, obviously, the the bylaws will be a big one, but in terms of other aspects, that will solicit that to see what your wants, as well as what you feel your wants and needs are, and we'll try to accommodate those the best we can. But the more diverse those become and that if we have to bring in, whether it be outside counsel or outside providers, we want to make sure that we can the first question they ask is, well, you know, what are some windows? What are some dates? What are, what are you looking at? So if there's something that we can take off the table because the majority of folks are away, or if even you can tell me, well, I think it'd be better off in August than, than July, any direction would be, would be appreciated.
I'm just going to.
There, we'll put out the doodle.
Since this is like a half-day hours, a little bit longer than a half-day. I'm, I'm assuming that a Saturday is what we're looking at?
I might actually prefer during the week, just because I have a lot of things going on during the week, weekends, at least in July. I think every weekend in July for me is booked up. So if we're, if we were to do it on a weekend, it would have to be in August. But I can take a day off work if we need to. And I think that would be appropriate to, for this type of activity. I don't know if everyone else on the committee has that flexibility, but I certainly am willing to.
I know in years past, we, it was during the week and we would those of us in private sector would just take the day off. But I definitely would not attend on a Saturday. Just.
All right. So I don't want to assume that, to use people's vacation days either. That's why I want to talk. Because I can take a day off too, but I would never assume that of somebody else. So yeah, that's good. But that's why we need to have a feedback that if people would rather have it during the week and take that day off from work, we can do that too. We just want to have all of us there if we can. I don't know if it's possible these days to get everybody, but we want to get everybody if we can.
So I've been enlightened so far that this is not a, in quote, fun retreat day. It could be fun. I'll make sure of that part. And but I'm trying to understand half-day, full-day, as well as professional development or working on issues of the committee? Is it a combination?
We usually get there and there might be coffee available kind of thing. And then we'll stop for lunch and we'll bring in lunch. And then we'll go for an hour or two after that. So we're looking at like eight-thirty to two-thirty kind of a deal. Yeah. So, and then we'd have different things going on throughout that time. So we might have some sort of professional development first, then we might do working on the bylaws, then do lunch, and then do some, another professional development, or we could look at in the past, we've done things like look at test scores and, and look at how those correlate to demographics. And, you know, so that's why we want to know what kinds of things we, the one thing we, I do know we need is the bylaws piece. And I would like some sort of professional development that everybody think, you know, what they feel would help them most. And then again, if there's something else and maybe the administration has something they would like us to work on. So that's always an important, and look, they're not like, yes, we want you to work.
Lots of homework. Just kidding.
So, so that's kind of the layout. Does that help? Okay. So it, is it better for us to find a date that works with us and then try to find a professional development that's available to come in or the other way around?
So depending on what the professional development is, if there's multiple providers or if we can provide it in-house. So we'll look at, we'll look at all options. So ultimately, you know, if there is a certain weeks or days that work best, giving us a window of which we can then say, okay, we've got this window. Okay, once we then put out okay, and we work on terms of agenda setting or in terms of a professional development needs, what's folks' top priorities would then give us guidance to, whether that's something that can be handled in-house or as an outside provider. Or is something that is, can be taken care of through an internal protocol? So.
So if you, you and Mr. Seeger can look at like when you're available, because you might have vacations planned and things, and we want you there. And then Terry can send out what'd you call him, Michelle? A doodle poll? A doodle poll? To see, you know, from what you're available, when we're available, and then we'll come up with those dates that most of us can be there. I think that would probably be, sound like a good way to go. And then also, if, every bit more homework, if you can reply to Terry, if you have some thoughts on what kind of professional development? If you can reply to Terry, if you have some thoughts on what kind of professional development would be the most helpful? That, that would also um kind of help us decide what to, what the agenda should be that day. Yeah, Michelle.
As a, as a school committee, it, um so the first question I have is um and I think I've asked this for about three years now, four years. And have we been able to procure the key work of school boards for each member? I have one, but I might be the only one that, no, we didn't.
But we were all, the, all seven of us got them this year.
Well.
I don't remember.
No.
I didn't get another one. That's all I'm saying because I.
Like a book, maybe it was, maybe I'm confusing my years. Might have been last year, but I thought we all got them.
Okay, but I don't remember actually getting that.
So, so that's a, that's like a outside of the re- retreat. I'm gonna continue to call it a retreat. Um but I think one of the big main things that we should do is um set school committee goals for us as a body. What are our goals for next year? And at then in the spring, we can do a self-evaluation. We haven't done that, either one of those things.
That's a great idea. I like that full setting. That, that wonderful idea.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Paul.
He's uh from a few years back and.
Yeah, to re- to relook at them and, and maybe see if they're still appropriate or how we want to update them. Okay, great. Now, these are, these are great ideas. If you come up with some after tonight, just please send them to Terry. Um and then, you know, we can come back and look at them and see which ones we want to do that day. I mean, these are two great ideas. Um so any, anything else before we move on? We, anybody want to add one? All right. Well, thank you all for the discussion. I appreciate it. It really helps us um plan for the workshop. All right, next up, um discussion action. Legislative liaison updates. A, current initiatives. B, resolution received from Situate School Department regarding funding the private school transportation by state and local education agencies. And C, written testimony supporting H five three nine nine and Act relating to education unfunded mandate bill received from Warwick School Committee. And I'm gonna turn that over to our legislative liaison, well, one of them at least, Michelle.
So the, right now, the current initiatives, we should all be receiving them from Mr. Duffy. But one of the ones that came out this week, it's something about better communication with regard to the they call them vocational schools, but then later, they called them career and technical education. So I think that bill in the Senate bears watching. Um there's another one that I think also bears watching. It's called the educational equity um as related to property tax. And if you recall, at it, it's not too long ago that we were at a Rias Rhode Island Association of School Committees meeting. It wasn't the one last week. Um but they went through the, how they calculated the, the funding formula. And there was the student success factor. They want to add into that student success factor a dollar amount as a factor for students that are on Medicaid. So um that's, that's the current stuff that's going on. And then we have um.
Um sorry to interrupt. Do you have the bill numbers for those?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Um so the vocational schools, better communication is Senate Bill six, six, two.
All right. So the S six, six, two. Looking for it on the legislative website.
Right. And the um, the one for the student success factor to be added for Medicaid, uh you know, it's called educational equity. It's S two fifty-nine. There's two others that Mr. Duffy brought to our attention. Something with the high-needs special education students. S one ninety-two. And to me, this just sounded like yet another unfunded mandate. It was about testing the air quality in our schools. S nine seventy-seven. And we have the, the resolution from um the Situate School Committee and the correspondence from the Warwick School Committee with regard to unfunded mandates.
So can I ask what the, are, are we being asked to support the resolutions that, from the other towns? That, or what, what's the potential act? It's a we have an item for discussion and action. I'm wondering what the potential action is.
I, I think we should take the resolution one at a time. So um the um, the Situate School Committee re- resolution um is uh with regard to the private school um transportation. And they were talking about changing the regions, making the regions smaller. So um I'd just like to know if we, if the committee would like to um craft a resolution with similar language, but with our town in there. Um and send it forth to the General Assembly um on the um private school transportation. And that is.
I, I'd be in favor of, of that, but I do want to see the numbers, because there are specific numbers here for Situate as far as what the, their, their specific transportation cor- costs are. So we would need a version, not just switching out the school district, but we'd also want to put our specific numbers in there to make sure that we're, you know, when it comes up for consideration, we're, we're, you know, it, it makes sense.
Right. Well, when, when I said switch out the, then the correct name of the town, I, I was meaning craft it in a way that it reflects our town.
Yeah.
So is this, is this supporting the bill that would reduce the size of the zones? Or this, the way they worded it, it sounds like it would, this is different, right? This would just reduce our
Yeah, I just want to say.
Share the cost of transporting students to private school. It's not clear whether it would be a hundred percent or some shared cost.
There's multiple transportation bills out there. The, so there's like three or four different ones. Yes.
Including one that we have, right? Yeah. Well, it's now council put for.
Correct. Um and that has to do with the funding formula, putting transportation in the funding formula, which I don't believe is in a current bill. But there are current bills for the rezoning of the education districts and bills for transporting um private schools' children. And I believe there's one on the homeless children as well, students. So there's multiple bills out there.
I believe there's, there's one for um state support and a- assistance with transport, transportation of homeless students.
That's included in this. Well, so, so my suggestion about that, if we're gonna use their resolution, I would name the bills, the, because they name the laws that they're referring to, but I don't think they're, they're naming the bills that the, their resolution is supporting. So I think we need to know what, what bills they're refer, if there are built, maybe there aren't. And that's why they don't refer to the bills. But we should be, we should be identifying if there are certain bills that would fix what they're referring to. We should refer to those bills. I think we should also probably take the resolutions that if our town council is passing resolutions supporting fixing the funding formula or other things that would support our district, we should also take the resolutions the council's supporting and support them ourselves. Um so I'd like to see us do that. But if we, I mean, I, I support what they're talking about here. I would just like to know is there a specific bill or bill, multiple bills, I think? That's what they're referring to and we should, we should specify that.
You're right. And I, I'm sorry, I did not follow through on that piece of it. I will bring back um at our next meeting if the chair will allow me to put that on the next meeting. I will find all the specific bills related to transportation. But the transportation resolution that the town co- our town council sent, we already sent one of those. We followed through on that and, and sent that already.
So Michelle, if I can, what I think I hear you saying, and correct me if I misstated, is that you're asking us to basically draft a resolution for the town of South Kingstown that, what's that? For the school committee, that we could put forward that would emphasize certain bills that are in existence as well as delineate the specific transportation costs to our budget as such, right? Is that kind of where you're?
Yes, um.
And this is kind of a foundational piece to look at.
This is, this is, well, this was sent to us by the Rhode Island Association of School Committees that, that Situate sent it to them. And so by um you know, protocol, uh it's not really protocol, it's um the way they the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, it's a practice by them that when they get a resolution from a school committee, they send it out to every school committee in the district, in the, in the state. And so um what so I, I'm gonna be honest, I, I misread this. I thought this was all about the um private school transportation. But as Ms. Vetta correctly pointed out, there are several bills in the House and the Senate relating to transportation. And I would ask the committee to allow me time to look those up and bring all of them back to you.
That sounds good. I think there is another one. Um I think it was S nine seven two. I think that one was in relation to the uh resizing of the, the districts. Um I know that one, we kept getting notifications that was postponed from being heard. I'm not sure why, why it was being postponed, but I know there was a it was a good one to support because it did help with budgeting for districts um uh to not have to send, to pay for students to go as far as we're paying for them to go now to other C T programs.
And, and I think the re- read draw, redrawing the lines for the zones was related to the pub, private school transportation.
Was it private or C T or both?
No, the private schools.
Okay, it was just, okay.
I, I believe it might be both because it would it, the, the C T Es that you can choose and be transported to would follow those districts as well. So it would be, you would have to transport to the private schools in your district and the C T E schools in your district. So by making your district smaller and having more of them, you won't have to drive to the students as far. And, and I think these bills are, are on the right um I, I know that they're, they're on the right path to help us um contain costs, especially transportation costs. So I, 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 I agree that this is something we should look into. Um there are separate bills in the Senate and alleged, and the um the House side, so we probably need both bills. Um but I know Paula, you wanted to say something.
What I want to say was that normally when a bill comes out, it is a cluster of legislators. And particularly, you know, with this um, with the um the educational equity and property tax relief, there is several different versions of this bill because it's coming from different legislators. And that's the piece that I wanna tell you to pay attention to because we can be writing resolutions and we don't know what bill it is. And then we'll end up supporting only a portion of one out of multiple bills, if that makes sense. I mean, I'm always on, I have, um if you go under Tim Duffy, he will show you the list of these bills and how they come in clusters and their different components. So I would just take a very look at that before we start to create too many resolutions.
And, and I will um research and find the bill numbers that are appropriate, that go with um the private school transportation and the transporting homeless students. I'll see what else there is, what transportation bills.
And, and I just wanted to clarify for community that's watching. Uh we were talking about these districts and it might not be something that everyone's familiar with as far as how this works, is that there's, I, I believe it's five districts in the state of Rhode Island right now where you're um because these were developed a number of years ago before, you know, a long, a large number of years ago. These were developed a number of years ago when there were fewer vocational programs, a fewer C T programs. And now that we have these C T programs across the state, there's various needs, you know, various desires amongst the students to go to this C T or that C T. And if they're within one of these five districts and their home district is in that same district, they get transported to that C T program at the cost of the home district. Uh what the legislation is talking about, what the proposal is, is to change it from, I believe it's five. I might have the numbers wrong, so don't quote me on this, but I believe it's from five districts to nine. Basically making it more reasonable for districts to not have to send someone from, I believe they can go from West Warwick all the way to Barrington now because they're part of the same district. Uh obviously, that's a huge transport cost, a huge distance for that student to go uh on the backs of the, the taxpayers of their home district. So they're going to, you know, these, these bright, you know, kind you know, to make it more reasonably sized districts so that we don't have to bear that cost of sending someone to a, a faraway district that is um, you know, not, not necessarily needed. Uh obviously, this student still has opportunity to attend those C T programs. But um we, uh, you know, it does come at a cost to the home district.
And they were, the districts were outlined a, a regi- with the idea originally in mind um of the original vocational schools that were funded by the state. And then, you know, if you lived in this area, you could go to this, you know, a, a specified vocational school. Now that individual, there are no more state-run vocational schools except J. Um, so. And the Met, but I'm not sure that's a actually vocational school. Um.
So we, I, I will definitely um, take. We will definitely focus on the, um, our next meeting agenda as requested. No problem.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vetter.
Sure thing. Okay, so, um, that will bring us to item G, discussion, action. Policy number three, five, zero, five, child nutrition program procurement policy, draft second read.
Thank you, um, ma'am chair. This is a policy we discussed in our last meeting. Uh, Mr. Kilpatrick will come up and. Uh, talk to it. I don't think there, there might be some changes, but he can, he can certainly address those and. Um, on this one and then, and the next one. So, Mr. Kilpatrick.
Good evening again. I'm happy to report there are no changes for this policy, so.
Yeah, for a second. Yeah, just bringing up for a second read if there are any further discussions or comments or. Changes, let's announce the time to bring them forward. Otherwise, if we're comfortable with it, we can go ahead and, uh, you know, get a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve policy three, five, zero, five, the procurement plan.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. All right, on to the next one, travel and reimbursement, draft second read.
All right, very similar to the last one. I think this is coming to us with the minimal of any changes from the. Original first read. Uh, again, Ms. Kilpatrick, I'll let you speak to that.
Sure, thank you, James. So, based on the feedback I received at the last school committee meeting, I made. A few small changes. So looking at page two, section D. We changed the um, the number of days that employees had to submit. Their receipts for reimbursement from five calendar days to ten business days. And also in that section, we added some what we'll call enforcement language. Uh, this was a question that came up. And so basically that reads now, it's the last sentence of section D, failure to adhere to any of the above referenced timelines may result in a delay. In approval and or reimbursement of expenses, and in cases of extreme failure, a denial of uh, approval and or reimbursement. Only changes there. And then if you look at section F on the same page. We changed the IRS mileage reimbursement rate to the rate that is in effect as of the date of travel. So I had it as of the effective. Date, uh, as of the fiscal year effective date, but that didn't make sense. And so we changed that to the date of travel. Whatever the published rate is by the IRS, that's the rate that they're entitled to. That's the change there. And then the last significant change is section H. So we added language, uh, some exceptions to the maximum reimbursable lodging rate. So you, you might remember, we basically tried to cap that at the G S A, which is the federal government's um, website. Uh, federal government travel rates, we capped that at the G S A published rates for the location where the event is taking place for lodging. We have two exceptions, the only allowable exceptions to the U S government per diem rate. Uh, include the least expensive single room rate at the hotel, which is serving as the conference headquarters. Or the single room rate of the hotel closest to the convention center or headquarters, really, uh, building. We wanted to add this in based on feedback from Mr. Pedraza so that we weren't arbitrarily making it difficult for employees. To find lodging at that G S A federal rate. A number of times, you'll find a hotel that's um, at the G S A rate, but it's further away from where the actual event's taking place. So now they gotta incur additional uh, transportation costs, things of that nature. We didn't wanna. Arbitrarily um, restrict our employees um, in that regard. So that's the, the primary change we made there. If that makes sense. Those are the only changes. No other changes were made to this document, so.
I'd like to make a motion to accept uh, policy three, two, one, zero, travel and reimbursement as read. This evening.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Excellent.
Thank you, Ryan.
Very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick, for your work in these policies. I'm glad to get them done.
All right, that will bring us to item J, discussion, action, school building committee update.
So last night, uh, we had a wonderful update, um, presented to the town council. Um, so we have. If you go to the South Kingstown School Building um, website, which is S K school project dot com. Um, they have updated the website with the new um, current. Draft of what the exterior of the high school will look like now. The color scheme, just a heads up with the color scheme, um, the, what we are calling the ribbon, the accent. Color that goes around, that is a dark brown. Um, it does not necessarily, it renders differently on different computer screens. And different monitors and different printouts, but it is a dark brown that is reminiscent of the brown that is um, accents the hazard building. Um, and the website is S K school project dot com. No S is in there except for in uh, S K school. So they're all singular words. We have a lot of work that needs to be done over these next three months to get us. To keep us on schedule and to get us ready for the start of school. This September, while we put our shovels in the ground this summer. Um, Gilbane and the project team are working very hard to get it to the, get the. Layout of the property to the point where. By September, whatever our first day of school is, fourth or whatever it is, this coming September, that the fence is up. And that we have a temporary road that will actually come in. We'll be moving the current um. Entrance at that, where the hazard building is, where we all pull into park for tonight. That will be moved over and a new curb cut will be put in and a temporary road will be transitioned out for um, for. The. Current drop off. Um, and then bus drop off and pickup will be moved to the front of the building of Columbia Street. That's the ideal, and that's what we're shooting for. And we want it in place before the first day of school starts because what we don't wanna have happen is uh, two different. Uh, traffic flow patterns to occur within the first few weeks of a school year. Um, it's crazy enough for school, the, for the schools to get everybody orderly and, and flowing in and out properly. We wanna make sure that we get that ahead of time. So that is really, that and safety are priority number one for um, this coming summer. Um, I have asked, uh, there was a wonderful presentation that was given last night with bullet points and key dates. And it was supposed to be put on the website and it's not there. So I'm like. Um, hopefully, that, that will be up by um, by tomorrow and I'll direct the, um, I'll have a email sent out to the team. But you can um, go to the document library. And where it says current design drawings and floor plan. Um, if you click in on there, and I believe it's also, you can, there's actually a better. View right from the homepage, if you scroll down to the bottom of the homepage. Um, you can expand uh, the images that are shown in the gallery. And you can click on like exterior view number one, two, three, and four to look at the outside, and then there are the floor plans for the inside. Um, please understand that first floor plan, second floor plan, third floor, floor plan, those um, they currently have specifics. Um, kind of their very teeny tiny print. Um, that, that information is also still being updated as we go along. Um, so we wanna make sure that we understand that those are not in cement. Um, but it just gives you an idea of where we have landed with the design development process. Um, we have a lot of meetings with Ride that are upcoming. Um, we have a lot of permitting. Um, meeting dates that we have to hit with Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, with South Kingstown's Town Planning Board. Um, all of those schedules um, and bulletin points, they'll be uploaded to the, to the website, hopefully by tomorrow. Um, we have updated the project team. It's a little small, so you have to kind of zoom in on it if you can, but it shows all the members of. Our project team from Studio Jade, Slam, Leftfield, Gilbane. Um, and what they've done is put a nice little town seal next to the folks who are local. Um, so we have uh, three members of our team that live here in South Kingstown. There are two members of the team. Um, who are just right next door in Aragantit. Um, and it's just, it's nice to have, um, you know, knowing that we're in local hands is, is um, is exceptional to have. Does anybody have any specific questions? I know Leftfield was here at our last meeting. They gave a great update. Kind of the same information. We have our next school building committee meeting is this Thursday, town hall at six o'clock. We, we will have one more school building committee meeting at the end of the month, and then June fifth. In place of our school building committee meeting will be a public forum that we will be holding at the town hall. Um, where we will be, they will put, be presenting, um, we'll know our cost estimates at that point, and we'll be presenting kind of the. I don't wanna say the final design product, but pretty close to what we're gonna be going forward with for our final stage. Um, will be on June fifth, presented out to the public.
And I saw last night that. They're going to come for one more approval from us on the design, June, they'll be coming to the school committee for an approval of the design. As well, is that June tenth?
That'll be June tenth. It just happened to, for the order doesn't, you know, it, we have to have town approval, we have to have school committee approval before we can do a. Final submission to Ride. Um, and I believe that will be after the June tenth, they will be submitting the following day.
And then I just have one question. I, great work. I, I think I'm like most people, I love the redesign of the outside of the, the color scheme. I think it looks so much better. Um, my question is about the work for the um. The stadium at Curtis Corner. Have they done any design work on that, any renderings or anything? Because I haven't heard a lot about what the stage of that part of the project is.
But, so it's, what's gone on with that part of the project is initially, um, we've made it very clear, eleven million dollars is our budget over there. Because it was, it was being uh, kind of grouped in with this larger project, um, and Gilbane was doing some estimates. Um, they came to us with. Significantly in excess of eleven million dollars. And we said, well, that's lovely, but our budget is eleven million dollars. And so what we've done is we've, we've actually broken it up into three prod, three mini projects. And so there will be a demolition will be a project, and then we are looking at the stadium. The field, the track as another project. And then there's a third component of the kind of the supporting surrounding area and what we're doing with. Parking and, and different recreational aspects of it. And so we're gonna be parsing out each of those three projects and actually going out for early bid, and it won't necessarily be. Gilbane who's going to do that work. Um, so what that will do is it will. Um, cost contained significantly, and um, Luke Maria is kind of leading that up with Studio Jade. Um, to make sure that everything is in order. Um, I don't wanna say there's a holding pattern on it cuz. There isn't, it's still gonna run parallel, but our number one focus has been getting this ready cuz. Clearly, our educational programs are number one. Um, and so once we get the, the design development um, kind of pin in. Then we can start really taking our resources and, and putting it to the Curtis Corner project.
Well, there is an I S, I know we've talked, or you've brought back that if we can. Do these things and, and call one project, like we finished that, then we can put in for reimbursement early. It seems to me like things like demolition of the building could be done as its own, like you said, as its own project, and then we can go ahead and put in for that. For reimbursement. So that's kind of the plan.
Yep, and, and we're still moving forward with that, and the, and with that, what would happen is we. Put it in, we do it early, we get the reimbursement back to the town, and it starts to pay down the current debt. Which, right now, all the projections that the town finance department has put out there. They're not including those early bid packages, and so those numbers will consistently be dynamic and, and constantly changing and. Hopefully, in, in a better direction.
That's great. I mean, that's always, that's good news, and I, I hope that they can do some of this work as. As soon as feasible so that we can begin getting that, that's, that's better for the taxpayers to, to get that work done early. So thank you.
We've been having incredible conversations with Ride about just that. Um, there was this little back and forth with. Having a complete package before. You start doing anything, and we're, our project team was fighting for, no, we wanna do these small. Um, early bid packages so that we can start seeing work get done and reimbursement coming back as we've broken them up. So. We've gone to bat for that big time uh, with Ride and, and um, we're finding success with it. I wanna also give a huge shout out to Mr. Pedraza, but also um, Chip McGar has been. An incredible liaison advocate. Um, they, the, last night they gave the architect, um, the main architect, Mark Rhodes. Gave big kudos to him because he's, he truly advocates for our educational programs, and, and we are confined by budget. And so he, we are making sure we're getting the biggest bang for our buck, and he's doing a tremendous job.
That's great. I, I did have a question that came up from when Studio Jade, or Leftfield was here. Um, the. Timeline for the approval of the design. We can be, we can call an emergency meeting if we need to. I, I, I feel like that's something we should do if it helps the timeline, if we can save a week. Uh, so if you, if you feel at any point that that's going to save us some time, I'm a hundred percent on board of that. Uh, I, I hope, you know, at least three other members are. Uh, so we can get some approval going there. Um, but yeah, I just wanna make sure, I remind you that that's something. I think we should be willing to do i- to move this along cuz we don't want to miss our deadline. We wanna make sure we. Do everything in our power to make sure we meet that opening deadline, uh, and, and hopefully September twenty seventh, but, you know.
So. Cuz we, we, that is definitely on the radar for both bodies.
My question has to do with the interior layout. And making these documents public. I thought we didn't do that.
This is just design, it's not.
So this is not, okay, thank you. I can sleep.
Good, I didn't offend you. So that is it. Um, like I said, we have our next uh, school building committee meeting this coming Thursday, six o'clock, town hall. And then, um, we are, we'll be starting to put out flyers for the uh, community forum, June fifth, six to eight o'clock at the town hall. And if you're interested, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I think we're very interested. All those in favor?
Aye.